Hello. Hi Karen.
Hey Sheri.
Hey guys, how are you?
How are you?
Karen, I never see you anymore. Right?
In the tech cave.
Right, it's crazy. Is it as cool as the Bat Cave?
Of course it is. Be back in a few guys.
What's up guys?
You there?
Hey Matt. Before we, before we start. The, the line item budgets you're sending out.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm making the assumption that, that when you send those out, that's just business as usual. There's nothing that we're necessarily looking for in there, right?
No, no, that's just giving the detailed line by line so everybody can see where we're operating from.
Right, so there's nothing, I mean, you know, nothing to see here kinda, right?
I mean, it's, it's. Yeah, yeah, it's just, this is full transparency. Here's our budget, every single line detailed.
Alright, I started printing it out today and I was like seventeen pages. What am I really looking at here?
Right, right, I mean, really the last page, the bottom line, you guys really wanna look at that and see where we're at. So, when you're looking at the FY21, that bottom line says we gave 216,000 back to the town. So that's really kinda the important piece.
Right.
Unfortunately, when I downloaded those reports, you have to, at the end of the year, there's like a small window you can download the reports. And then budget sent starts to change again because we start paying off different things and, and moving POs around. But um, normally it would be regular education, special education and then.
Alright, I was pretty sure I was supposed to be looking for something and I'm like, you know, I'm kinda looking for a needle in a haystack, I mean.
It's a, it's, it's just very, very detailed information if anyone's really interested in it. So we're, we're really throwing it out there and saying, this is, this is what we're, we're paying. These are the very detailed lines of how we're paying it.
Yeah, okay, I mean, I know that we've been doing it for a while and I'm not sure if I. You know, if I'm looking at this thing, am I supposed to be looking at someone particularly or am I just kinda looking for, you know, a needle in a haystack or whatever? It's, it's, it sounds like it's just, hey, we're paying our bills, here's how we're paying them and we're moving on.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
No one else would find that fun, Dinesh, for the record.
I do.
It said, no one else would find that fun, like searching through all of that.
Well, you notice I'm asking.
Financial data.
So I'm not necessarily finding it fun. Kinda fine not doing it, you know.
Yeah, I think, I mean, the bottom line is really important number. We, we have movements that happen in all of those lines as the year goes on. Different things pop up, you know, we, we, and we find corrections that maybe we may have been doing wrong over the years. We correct those, so you see, you see some movements that happen back and forth, but really it is that bottom line that's the most important piece.
Okay.
So go to page seventeen, you'll be good. Coming up on six thirty, is everybody here?
We are here.
Madam Chair, how are you?
Good, I'm here, um, I have one more minute, right?
Yeah, and then per the request, we'll move the, we'll move our students to um, number one and then the opening.
Sure.
Great idea for our students so they can go home and do all their homework.
Just on mine.
Are we short one student?
Yeah, Malia is, I think, getting logged in, I think.
Okay.
Zoe, you know, your name comes up as me, right? Okay.
Who?
Zoe's coming up as me.
I didn't get a meeting invite for some reason, so Malia sent me your link.
Yeah, Malia didn't get one either actually, so she, she's.
Neither of them, so nobody, on the two students, nobody got a, got a, got an invite?
No, we got like a first email that said like, oh, you're gonna get an invite on Tuesday, but then Tuesday came and we never got an email.
Okay. I'll correct that, I'll make sure we correct that, hon.
Okay.
We will do that for you.
It was because this invite was sent a few weeks ago, maybe that's why.
Yeah, one of the things we gotta work on is kinda like, uh, the invitations probably need to go out like day of. Cause everybody gets lost in their email.
They do get lost when they come too soon.
Yeah. Alright, six thirty, Madam Chair.
It looks like we're ready to start. I'd like to welcome everybody to the Norton School Committee Meeting on Thursday, September twenty-fourth. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Um, so welcome everybody, we will start with our student representative updates.
Malia, you first or me? Okay.
So, we emailed all of the principals today and we heard back from four out of five of them. So, from the JCS, we talked to Mrs. Bolton and she said that one thing that we could share is the warm welcome that the Salmies Parent Organization provided. They had written and drawn messages with sidewalk chalk, had balloons at all entrances and provided snacks for staff during the.
At the LGN, it was a little confusing trying to get all the kids like used to the whole six feet stuff, but. All the kids were excited to go back to school, they're trying their best to get used to everything.
And then, so for the yell, he said that Mr. Gaines said that they had a tremendous opening. Students in fourth grade are quickly learning the layout of the building, even in the short couple of days. The fifth graders are taking their roles as models for all students seriously and how they are respectful, responsible and safe. Everyone is doing a great job of working from home and all the teachers and staff should be condemned, condemned, commended for all their efforts during these first few days. We are so excited to be back, we love it and we just want to continue.
Um, the middle school, so they like, middle school always wants to do like fun things, so they wanted to keep the fun going with the new school year. So they tried adding like, they played music throughout the like lunch and they also tried playing TV shows. So I, while they're eating lunch, it's not just like six feet apart, like kind of alone, we got some stuff to do. Um, and then at the high school, it was a little kinda hard for, I think, one of the problems was at lunch. We kinda all wanted to sit outside and like everyone was kinda close together, but today they actually put spray paint dots all over the grass. So that way like everyone is six feet apart and it's a lot better and I think like everyone's used to the one-way hallways now and it's kind of different for high school. But I think it's working well and I'm excited to go back.
I think especially for the high school, it was a lot to get used to, especially if you're new to the high school, probably for freshmen and stuff. Like the arrows was a lot to try and play a game of like shoots and ladders when you're trying to get to math with something. But um, I think, I think people are adjusting well and I think that overall everyone's doing a good job.
Well, thank Zoe and Malia for your updates. I know that this is really a crazy time to beginning, to be starting kind of school and then also sort of sitting with us to be our student representatives. I really appreciate you reaching out to the schools, kind of getting their input and, and being able to report it back to us. So, welcome to your new role, it's great to have you join us. I'm not sure, does anybody have any comments or? Well, thank you.
Karen, just a quick comment. Um, the, the music at the, at the middle school, I think that's a great idea. I don't know if, if it's adoptable at other schools, but, but it certainly, it, it turns what kind of is a, is a sour and maybe a, a downer type of, of a, you know, a lunch into something a little bit more exciting and fun, I think, so.
I really, I like the movies and also at the high school, I really like the eating outside. I think that that's really fun to do now and I think that if we kept doing that, it could be like, students have shown that they're capable of handling it. So I think going forward, that could be a good thing to add.
It's a great point, one of the things, um, I was talking to my brand-new high schooler about was like, what would it be like eating lunch? Kind of six feet apart, everybody sitting at their own desk. And we wondered if it was going to be like total silence or if it was going to be extra loud. Cause everybody would be sort of screaming across sort of their six feet, you know, sort of space. So, um, I don't know at the other schools, but I have to say that my high school really enjoys being outside for lunch as well. It's a real nice time to kind of get a break, to, you know, just sort of refresh a little bit. Um, and that it seems like they are kind of sitting six feet apart, but they're close enough that they can kind of have conversations. That people are not screaming across the room and things like that, so it's worked out really well. Um, but any kind of creative way to keep our children engaged and, and really sort of offer them that emotional support is really, I think, important. So, some creative ideas happening. But, thanks everyone, thanks Zoe, thanks Malia. So, Dr. Bietta, I will turn it over to you for an update on the opening of schools.
Well, I have to tell you that, um, you know, first of all, thank you to both Malia and Zoe. Um, and I'll be reaching out to the two of you just for us to maybe talk about some of the things that you're hearing from the schools that we can do better. Cause I think it's really important, it's really hard for me to hold meetings with students right now unless I do and re-zoom and. Um, so I'll be reaching out, I'll email the two of you via the local Norton access so that we can talk a little bit about that. You know, in general, I have to say that, uh, you know, this is my thirtieth year in public education and this is by far the weirdest year. Um, to use um, just common language, I think we've done a lot of preparation. Um, I think that that preparation in general has paid off, but we have hiccups. In areas like I, I said to not only the school committee, but to, to the, to the parents respectfully. Um, I'd like to announce tonight that I will be reaching out to both our digital learning program parents or the, or the parent remote, remote choice group. Um, where I will hold an individual town hall for them and then I will also be doing the same thing for the hybrid parents. And that will be probably coming out the first full week in October for the second and third week as a way to collect some data. Um, for the school committee as part of the October thirtieth data collection, so that'll be coming forward. The, there are some common themes in general within all of our five schools. Um, one of them starts with an appreciation for our staff and our students. Um, our students are really following the rules, um, they're, they're utilizing and understanding that social distancing and washing hands and using the masks is something that needs to be done. And, and I think that, that's a common theme from the principal's bulleted item report that they provided to me for tonight. I also think that the other part is that everybody's starting to realize that the buildings are at fifty percent or less capacity. So that people are starting to realize that when you do walk down the hallway, it's not as many people as you thought. Or to Malia and Zoe's comments, that people are starting to understand, as everybody knows Maggie's up at the high school this year too. And so it is everybody's favorite thing, as Carolyn you said, to eat lunch outside until the snow comes. Um, and then it might be a whole different, a whole different perspective of eating outside, but the students really enjoy that. Um, the mask breaks that are happening throughout the district, you know, students are enjoying that. Outside of my building every single day, watching our wellness teacher with the students outside in the middle of the fields, really taking. Um, you know, advantage of the good weather, if you will, while it's still less. The other part that is constantly coming up in terms of just the hybrid model right now is the excitement of students to be back. It is quieter in the hallways and it's definitely quieter in the classrooms, there's just this, people are trying to figure it out. But what's really important is that to the T, every student that I talk to and as the teachers talk to students and the students talk to each other. There's a, there's a sense of, of a positive, um, if you were, culture that's taking place. So kudos to the staff and to the administration at each of the buildings for doing that and to the students for following up. We have made significant changes at the, at the LGN, the Hay, um, the JCS in terms of pickup and drop-off. Um, and those are temporary in some ways because when the weather changes, we might have to change again, except especially if the first snow comes. Um, and I'm just being positive that we're gonna continue to be in school and, and do things and at school on the schedule that we have. But those have actually worked out to be very positive changes to the drop-offs and the pickups, so that's a good thing. We gotta make a couple more changes at the high school and the, uh, uh, middle school as well. And then, really the, the last, uh, the, the last group here, and I don't want them to be, last doesn't mean less, is the Distance Learning Academy Parent Trace Program. And that has been both very positive from some parents and some areas of constructive criticism. Um, around communication and improving communication and around expectations with students. So, um, that's a big area for us to really concentrate on. It is not good when the superintendent can drive down 123 and two of his students who should be at home learning are walking on 123. And since, not to pat myself on the back, but since I am a pretty engaged superintendent and pretty visible, I may not know every single student by name, but I sure as heck know that they're mine and that I have a responsibility. So we're gonna be reaching out to some families over the next few weeks, not only to say, how can we do better? But also really to call some folks to the carpet and say, your child belongs at home right now, not walking route 123. And as you all know, I don't have a problem doing that, even though I may not make some friends. Um, but there needs to be a constant, constant attention to the idea that the education of students is taking place. And then unfortunately, really unfortunately, that there is a lot of pressure placed on parents in this model. Either the hybrid or the full, uh, digital, um, learning academy. So, I think it's, it's, it's really important that we recognize that and that, you know, I'm not gonna tell parents how to parent, but I'm sure it's gonna heck say that, listen, your child does belong at home right now, working as part of our distance, um, learning academy. So, we'll have those conversations. And then lastly, accept the constructive criticism from families around what we need to do better. It is not easy to just teach someone via a distance learning model after, after all of your years of experience working in a classroom where you see students. And I think all of you, and I'm looking at you Carolyn right now because I know you're doing that and it's different, it's just different. These meetings are different, um, so, um, I'm really proud of our staff, I'm really proud of our students. That doesn't mean we don't have hiccups, that doesn't mean we don't have areas to improve, but. I do think that when we look at our opening of school and what's taken place, the work of many. Um, not only administrators, but teachers, support staff, um, I think has led us down a positive road with the understanding that we continue to try to do better every day. I had a conversation via, let's talk the other day, actually it was an email with a parent. And they weren't very happy about something and I, I apologized to them by saying, I'm not happy because your kid is not getting what I think they should be getting as well. So I have to do better on behalf of the student, not only the parents to do better, um, for them. So, we continue to work on that, um, but, uh, we're moving in the right direction. It's a, we're learning every day and we couldn't do it if we weren't trying to work as a team versus trying to just work against each other. And I think that's a positive thing as well. That's it.
Great, thank you. I think, you know, everybody probably comes to this a little differently depending on the choices you made, depending on your individual student. So, Dr. Bietta, of course you know, um, I don't think that we can, we could have had such a positive transition back to school after a six-month hiatus. If you weren't leading sort of us as a school committee, um, your administrators, your staff, really sort of, um, working collaboratively like you said. So, I really do thank you and I know, um, one of the, I, I think one of the aspects that we're most lucky about here in Norton is your visibility. Um, that you are really present and that I hope families know that if they have a concern, if they have a question, if they have a compliment, that they can reach out to you and you will respond quickly. So, thank you for everything, thank you to our staff and certainly thank you to our students. It's been really nice to sort of see kids at drop-off, um, really kind of being happy and, and excited to go into the school building. So, any other comments? I'm not sure if there's comments from any of our listeners. Seeing none, so, thank you for everything, everyone. Um, so I'm gonna turn it over to Chief Clark who has an update on the Norton Police Department School Resource Officer Program.
Chief, if I may, before you go on, um, Madam Chair through you and the rest of the committee and the public, you know, there's a lot going on in the world today. Um, and there's an incredibly positive relationship between the Norton Police Department and the Norton Public Schools. And I think it's really important, um, for us to recognize this as we're dealing with a lot of, um, the politics of the world and the, the conflict that's happening around us and around our students. And, um, and by students, I mean in general, not just Norton. And, and our work with the police department has always been to be proactive, to find ways to support families so that we can get resolution to issues as they arise and come forward. Regardless if it's spray painting something on a building like it happened the other day, to a bullet situation like we had in the, in the, in the, uh, last, last fall, spring or winter. Um, to a, a situation where we, we're in, in court because of, of whatever. There's also the part that no one ever gets to see and that is the day-to-day engagement of our school resource officers with our students and our staff within the building. To watch them teaching a lesson about safety, to watch them teaching a lesson about making good choices, to watch them providing students an opportunity to give them feedback about how to be better police officers. And so, thank you to Officer Robashad and Sergeant Dennett and thank you to Chief Clark for allowing us to be able to have this program. Chief, it's all yours.
Good evening, everyone, it's good to see everybody, it's good that the school's back in session, I think that's a very big step. You know, I, I graduated from Norton High, my daughter graduated from Norton High and I have a, a eleventh grader in Norton High and he's waited eleven years to go to school just two days a week, so he's very happy. You know, this is, this has certainly been quite a year. Um, you know, internally with our police department, we started with some organizational change and some change in structure and some promotions. Um, we had a couple retirements, as you know, we added a second school resource officer in, in December and. Um, we started the project alert program back up at the middle school. And then in March, it seemed like we were playing in the Kathy Bailey game and we heard of a, a virus going around called COVID. And within five days, the schools were closed and, uh, the SROs were placed back in patrol and, um, you know, officers still came to work every day and not knowing what they were gonna encounter. Um, handling a variety of calls for service, you know, certainly mental health calls, we saw, we did see our domestic violence calls go up. But we saw like decreases in crashes and motor vehicle issues because really nobody was on the road. And then in, you know, we had the tragic sense, senseless death of George Floyd where it's really calling for police reform and defunding the police and removing SROs from the school. You know, our program has always been designed to work collaboratively, um, and to, you know, prevent issues before they happen. I've always felt, as the superintendent said, that we've had a great relationship with the schools. I mean, Joe makes it very easy to be honest with you, he's a, you know, he's very good to, to communicate with, he knows what's going on. It's, you know, we, we're in touch quite frequently. We've had a part-time SRO since two thousand and six and, and under Joe's leadership, we started a full-time school resource officer in two thousand and fourteen. But, you know, dealing with five schools, we, we thought there was a need to add a, a second school resource officer, which we did last year. Um, certainly a couple of things like Columbine and Sandy Hook were game changers for us and the safety and security of the schools. Are really paramount and we focused on, you know, best practices and safety and security and prevention education. You know, we have a note program in town that the, uh, school's a part of. Um, we brought in, you know, speakers like Kevin Stevens from, it's a former Pittsburgh Penguin and Chris Heron who, uh, played for the Celtics. And we've done a lot with prom and, um, other type of safety issues. But all in all, what we've really looked to do is really divert kids from the criminal justice system and just be a resource to, you know, the town, the, the students, staff and faculty. So, um, you know, when the school opened back up, us two school resource officers went back to school. You know, we have one Sergeant Dennett who's primarily in the high school and Patrolman Robashad who's in the middle school. They're both very well-received, um, you know, they kinda have a, a rock star image, especially by the, by the younger kids in the middle school. You know, it's, obviously we're adapting to different things, but they, they seem to say everything's going well as the start. You know, there are areas that we're all waiting for, for, for concerns to, to come up and I mentioned like the domestic violence things, we don't know if anything will come back in the schools about that. Um, certainly there's more, like Joe mentioned, there's more people, kids outside, which, you know, a year ago, we were basically in a locked facility that nobody could get into. So we have some, you know, we, we don't wanna become lackadaisical, um, we wanna make sure that, you know, kids are still safe even though they're outside. Um, but everybody, you know, from the, in the middle school and the high school have been, been great. Um, talking to, uh, Patrolman Robashad was talking to, uh, Principal Hayward again about starting up the project alert program, which may be a little, you know, a condensed version. But, um, there's really been no, no major issues. Um, we're gonna do some things a little differently regarding lockdown drills. Um, obviously we don't want kids getting into tight spaces with COVID going on, um, so we're gonna do something more along the lines of, of video class for that. And, uh, you know, our, our patrol is doing more checks of the school on a regular basis, um, as we know, the school's grounds are closed. So, um. You know, I just, uh, I've always said that we, uh, I've always thought that we have a great relationship with good open communication and it's just the, uh, you know, the safety of the, the student staff and to make sure that, uh, you know, we, we're a resource for when we're needed. So, I'll stop talking and answer any questions anybody might have.
Well, Chief Clark, I just wanna, um, say thank you for everything that you have supported through the years. I think as a school committee, I'll, I'll speak for myself, I might, um, also be speaking for others, but I think we really have always valued and respected the school resource officer position. Um, and felt really lucky when we were able to get a second position. Um, and I think one of the things you said is what we have always believed is that it's a real proactive approach. You know, as a SEL district, I think we really want to support and guide, um, our students to make best decisions possible. And I think that's what happens when you can be proactive in giving children sort of the opportunity to really, um, think about the choices they're making. So, thank you for supporting all of these sort of ideas that Dr. Bietta has had over the years about how we could make this happen. It's been a really successful relationship. Sheri, did you have any comments?
Yeah, I just wanted to mention to Brian, um, you know, when school districts started talking about, um, eliminating the SRO positions. Uh, you know, I, I just have to say, I'm sorry that we never really called you or our SROs to one of our meetings. It never even crossed my mind that that would be a possibility for us. I mean, you guys are such a huge part of our team that, and I don't even know what brought it to our attention, but we said, maybe we should have a discussion publicly to say that we're not even going down this road. So we did do that, I think it was the summer, Joe.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. About that. And I did, I did reach out, um, through text to our SROs and just, you know, let them know that, you know, I, I, you know, I apologize for not, um, being more public about it. It just, it wasn't on our radar and I think I speak for the entire, um, you know, school committee that we, we never even questioned. that we never even questioned that you guys wouldn't be with us. I mean, that's just foolish for us. So, I just, I probably should have reached out to you. So, sorry, Brian.
No, no problem.
I just wanted to note, Madam Chair, through you and the rest of the committee, you know, Chief is very kind, but it truly is that Chief and I get to talk about the needs, and then we have two officers who just get it done. And at the end of the day, you know, we've had a few incidents that, you know, that caused us some stress as a school community. And those officers, through his leadership and then his team of officers and patrolmen and specialists in the field, made us be able to open the doors the next day and feel safe. You know, I get the phone call from the chief, and it just says, hey, we're going to have, we're going to have some patrols coming through the building. So like, the opening day of school this year, you know, I tweeted out, thank you to Norton Police Department, simply because they were just running through the buildings, just checking it up. I was talking to Patrolman or Officer Schleicher, who was at the JCS the day before, he had to drop off his own kid, and he was just driving through, just checking it out, making sure things were running smoothly. Those things are the reasons why what's happening in the world and what's happening in Norton, in many ways, are different. And I think that's the realization. There's a lot of stuff going on that we can't control, but what we're trying to do is control good things between guys and gals in the field and our teachers and our students in our community. And I'm proud of that relationship. I really am. I think it's a model in many ways. We have a NOPE program, the Norton Opioid and Prevention and Education Task Force, that the chief started and made us proud of. It was actually students who named it NOPE, that the chief asked us to see how we could get students involved. And that's taken a very aggressive role within the town of making sure that we're dealing with the opioid addiction and issues that are still around us and still happening, right? You know, COVID hasn't stopped that necessarily. But the other thing is, Chief, to your comments, one of the things that we see in data statewide, and now I'm talking statewide because I don't have local data, but when you look at statewide, we went through like dead silence when it comes to reporting to DCF of child abuse and neglect. I mean, literally crickets statewide. And we know as educators working in the field, and you know, as a chief and your officers, that that's not the realization, that you don't get a phone call about that. And it went crickets for a long time. And we're really worried about what that's meant around the country, around Massachusetts, and even in Norton, where we have very small numbers, but let's not put our heads in the sand. It is happening. And, you know, there's a lot of work to be done over the next few months to continue to have positive relationships between officers that are in the trenches with our students, the Police Department in general, and public education in general. So, you know, there's, I don't want to beat the dead horse, but it is about collaboration and diverting. You know, that's the part that people don't get about what we do, maybe more aggressively than others. I don't know. I don't have any data. But I can assure the school committee, I can assure the public, that the work between my office as the superintendent, the SROs and the chief is always around trying to make sure that we're reeducating kids and not putting kids away. That is not what's happening in Norton. We are trying to re-educate students and families around making good decisions and going down a route where they can, you know, survive the world and what's going to be thrown at them as they get older. So, those are the facts in Norton.
Well, thank you. Is there any additional comments? Seeing none. So, Chief Clark, thank you. And if you could sort of extend our thank you to our SROs as well, that we really appreciate all the work that happens in collaboration with your department. So, thanks so much.
Thank you. Have a good night.
You too. Take care.
Carolyn, there was just a comment in the Q and A.
Oh, sorry.
That's all right. Sorry, my fault. From Peter Wiggins, wanted to thank Chief Clark and Patrolman Dennett and Robichaud, Sergeant Dennett and Patrolman Robichaud for what they do to protect our school kids. Great job. Kudos to MPD. Thank you, Peter.
And thank you, Peter, for your compliment of the school department as well. We appreciate that. So, we're going to move next, Dr. Byetta, to an update on the Massachusetts Partnership for Diversity in Education.
Yeah, I want to thank really my, some members of my staff for really pushing me on this. But one particular family in town, and I won't name them just for the sake of being professional, but the Massachusetts Partnership for Diversity in Education is 30, is now consists of 30 districts in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. We were one of the last three districts allowed, along with Holliston and Marshfield this year. And really, the idea behind this organization is a recruiting consortium made up of public school districts in Massachusetts. And the sole mission is to recruit and assist us in producing career opportunities for outstanding candidates of people of color in the idea, in the area of teaching, administration, and public education. And I'm really proud of that for two reasons. Number one, our student population is changing. Our community in general may not be changing as much, but our student population in terms of our children of black and brown, we're seeing our community grow and expand. And we also have a really clear dynamic within our portrait of a graduate, where we want to make sure that every student who graduates from the system, from pre-K through 12, is clearly understanding of what it is to be culturally proficient and understanding of what's happening, not only as an individual, but collectively, you know, who are you, and then who is everyone else, and what does that really mean as you leave us and you go to college and you go to the workforce and so on and so forth. So, I'm really excited about this. Karina Salloway, our Communications Officer, will be the lead person on this, along with my office. I've taken this as an initiative, as you know, for my goals. I talk about cultural proficiency. So I just want to thank the organization, MPDE, for accepting us, for understanding that we are committed to creating relationships. Forty-eight percent of the Commonwealth's children are minority students, but only eight percent of the teaching force in Massachusetts is. That's a dynamic. It's an interesting dynamic. And I can speak to it from a different perspective, not one of color, but one of ethnicity. Being brought up as, coming to this country as an English language learner, you know, as in those days, we used to call it bilingual education, and going through some of the issues I had to deal with back in the 70s and the 80s, and there's others of you that are listening to this, it was different. And I can remember, and happened to today, being a webinar with one of my former teachers, who is Portuguese-speaking and understands my culture, and understood that my parents didn't speak English, and that my dad barely is, you know, can barely write his name and is illiterate, and understands those things. It is not different for those that are of black and brown backgrounds either. And there's no excuses, from my perspective, who I am as a person. But I do believe, as a leader of an institution, that I have to make sure that we are understanding of the multiple cultures that surround our students on a daily basis, and specifically when they enter the workforce or continue their education. So I'm really, really happy for Norton Public Schools that we weren't the last ones to get into this, and I hope that the committee feels the same.
We do. And thank you so much for giving us that update and for sort of spearheading. I know that there was some support to complete this. And I think, once again, Dr. Byetta, really, we're going to talk about your evaluation in a few minutes, but I think that you are always open and willing to support Norton Public Schools to be the best it can be. And I think this is just one example of us really looking at our initiative to really develop more diversity in our community. So, I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Any comments? Seeing none. Matt, we will turn it over to you for an update on the financial concerns related to COVID-19.
Okay, thank you. So, I was going to share my screen, but I can't seem to get it to pop anything up right now. We shared some financials this afternoon. One of the most important ones we're looking at is that the expenditures that we've gone through so far for the COVID-19 to support the student needs and the needs of the district. To date, we are at $2,772,250 expended outside of the budget. So, we have funded that with CARES Act municipal funds, about $834,000 at this point. We have the ESAR grant of $187,000. The CVRF grant, which we just got approval for, is $519,000. The Remote Learning Tech Grant of $64,000. FEMA reimbursement is right about $190,000. And that's going to leave us having to support about $976,000 with appropriations. Of that $976,000, we did move forward $775,000 to the town meeting in support, which we've met with Mike, and we're going to be supporting about $330,000 in October, and then coming back in the spring for some more money. We also do have some savings within the budget of about $200,000. That's helping to kind of blend that out a little bit as well. So, it's a lot of, a lot of extra purchasing was done. The biggest portion so far is staffing. We've added about $700,000 worth of staffing. Four hundred, almost $450,000 worth of that is for LOAs linked to the FMLA and the FCCRA to help support us, the leaves that are out there, and making sure that we have staffed classes. Next biggest piece was obviously hardware, which was great. We really needed to buy the Chromebooks and iPads to be able to support all this. So, that's where we're at right now, as far as COVID goes. We know that we're going to have some more expenditures this year. If we continue in the hybrid, we're going to have to get more PPE. We know that what we have is a supply that's going to get us through a few months. We're going to have to resupply that. And we're just, that expenditure could be as much as probably another $300,000. And of course, we're just taking things as they come along. A lot of stuff is just popping up, and we're just getting it and meeting the need as it presents itself.
So, just to back this up with Matt's comments as well, I also provided to you, without using any names, just looked at the COVID leaves. We had 20 requests. That was higher than 25 at one point. I want to thank both the school committee and Champions for really allowing us to create a Champions program, not only for our families, but also for our staff, which brought those numbers down. But of those 20, we had a couple of LOAs that were not paid, but we were paying 15 people their full salary for X number of days, as you can see from the chart, either full year, because we made them remote teachers, and/or under FCCRA. Those are all acronyms, by the way, by federal requirements, Family Medical Leave Act, which has been in play for quite a while, which guarantees 12 weeks of paid leave, utilizing your sick days if you have them within the contract, and then FCCRA, which is due to childcare, not being able to get childcare, which guarantees you $200 a day for up to $12,000 through December 30 of this year, December 31. So, these are pretty significant federal regulations that have cost us within our operating budget some significant funding. And again, we recognize that people are, have medical issues around this COVID-19 situation, and/or family and/or have daycare situations. So that's where we're at right now. You're going to see this as a common theme throughout the Commonwealth of Massachusetts for this year. So as they're looking at trying to put together the final budgets of a $5 billion shortfall, it's going to be interesting to see how this is taken care of, considering that right now, there is no further federal money coming in. And all of this money must be expended by the 31st of December of this year. There is no rollover clause currently.
I think it might have just been sort of, I don't know, maybe misunderstood, but I think that when we said that we were going into a hybrid, I don't know if anybody, even me, until I was tutored a lot by those who I asked, that we would be expending so much extra money for salaries, right? I think in, kind of, your brain just sort of thinks that if we're going to be in school less time, then we won't be spending extra money. But I think that you just kind of explained it. So thank you, Matt, for bringing that to our attention, certainly to the public's attention, that we actually are putting out more money this year for salaries. And part of it is because we have children in our district who are doing sort of different things. We have some hybrid, we have some full remote, we have some, you know, everybody's got a little different need. So, I appreciate you kind of making sure that we understand that from a budget perspective, that this certainly isn't because there was mismanagement. It clearly is because we're in the midst of a pandemic, and we needed to really make sure that all of the students in Norton got what they really deserved in regards to education. So, thank you for always updating us and for helping those like me, who don't really understand when you send us a lot of numbers, how we can better understand that. So I appreciate it. Does anybody have any questions or comments?
Just had one quick question. So, as far as the timeline on a leave of absence versus like an FMLA. So FMLA is 12 weeks, and then what, they have to return to their position? Or would that turn into then a leave of absence after that?
So, there's a potential for a paid leave of absence under FMLA with accrued sick time. So as you're utilizing your FMLA federal, you're also being deducted your actual sick time. Then there's the potential after that, under the contract, the local contract, and this is statewide with almost every district, that if you have further medical documentation, that you could actually now continue into the contract as well. The key here is that some folks just don't have that time to be able to deduct, you know, the time away. And you have to deduct both FCCRA for childcare and the FMLA for medical, either for family or for yourself. If in fact, you're taking the time under FMLA for a family member, let's say a spouse, a child, then at the end of the 60 days, you cannot utilize the contract, because the contract is sick days are your sick days. But at that point, you've already utilized your family's sick time, if you will. So it would have to be that you yourself have medical documentation to not return. So that would happen, for example, with an unfortunate situation such as a heart attack, or a cancer patient, or any of those situations. We would go through a process of medical documentation, potentially a challenge, further documentation requested. And then, once you get to no sick days time available within your contract, then the only other option that you have would be the sick bank. In our contract agreement with the NTA, we took the part-time staff, and we created the COVID sick bank solely because we were concerned about being able to cover those people once they were no longer had the time, and if they were out because of an actual COVID-related school incident, versus, for example, staff that could be out because it was a family COVID situation that had nothing to do with school. It's a very much a diagram that just, it's kind of like, think of it like the diagram that just goes from A, then choose, it's either yes or no, then after that, it's then yes or no, then after that, it's yes or no, and then you finally get to a yes or just a no. It's the same thing for both of those.
Plus the contract.
Any other questions? Thank you for offering that info. Dr. Byetta, I'll turn it over to you to discuss your superintendent goals.
Yeah, so this year, one of the things that I really am going to be pushing with the Norton Teachers Association and our staff, including our administrators, paraprofessionals, and everyone under evaluation, is the whole idea of really trying to look at our evaluation and process around teaching all students instructional technology and becoming proficient in technology, myself included, social-emotional learning, which is an area that I think in general, we do well in, but how do we really, how are we really implementing that? And then cultural proficiency, which is really designed around what we talked about earlier, but really looking at our curriculum in terms of what's happening. And then I've created an action plan for each of those. I am going to ask you that you make an addendum tonight on goal number one of those four areas, which is to change that from October 1st to October 30th, only because I have to work with the Teachers Association to actually come to an agreement. And October 1st is like next week, so I know I'm not going to meet that goal. So if we could just change that, amend that to the 30th. Goal number two is really about providing you student panorama, student success plan data, where the students, where we're looking at student attendance, student grades, and student self-reporting about SEL, which we did last year for the first time, and what that really means. I'll get that to you both in February, and then again at the end of the year. My professional practice goal is really around learning, looking at the student learning goal up top, and then providing you with some detailed reporting of what we've accomplished in those areas that I noted. Should actually say four core areas, not three. And by that, what I mean is literally connecting the dots. I want to, I want to, I want to move- I want to, I want to, I want to move and get our staff, that includes the superintendent, by the way, to be more proficient in the other, in the, in certain areas, i.e. instructional technology right now is so important. SEL is so important. Teaching all students is so important. So there's a lot to do there. And of course, cultural proficiency, really understanding as an individual in the classroom as well as a, a member of a group, all different folks and backgrounds as we become a more diverse community. But for me, the instructional technology is a big one right now solely because of what we're doing, either remote, full remote, or we're in hybrid. And so what happens with students when they're home on the hybrid, on the remote day of hybrid is so important and our teachers need to feel comfortable. This is not an I got you. I have said this numerous times since March and I'm going to continue to say it. It's about a plan and completing the plan and becoming better at instructional technology. So all of these four topics. And then lastly, really looking at the cultural proficiency and creating a task force, you'll see a request for me coming out before the 15th. I'm going to be reaching out specifically to a couple of, of faculty members and staff members to be part of that. And really taking a look at our curriculum instruction, taking a look at what are we choosing for, for authors, for example, in our classrooms? How are we making sure that we are a, a anti-racist community, if you will, where, where we truly are a no place for hate, if you will, the old 1990s, early 2000s label that used to be placed into communities where you're trying to make yourself understanding and doing it, doing it in a way that is not about politics, but is truly about the humanistic approach to teaching and learning. And that's a very big component for me because you can do this in a humanistic approach and, and without the politics of what's happening around, around us in, in terms of providing not only you, the school committee, but the community, a plan for how we're going to do this as we become a more culturally proficient community of learners and a community in general. So those are my four goals. It does require a vote or actually doesn't require a vote tonight. It'll be a, coming out to you formally as part of my evaluation. So I'll send it to you for a vote probably at the next meeting. So if you choose to, if you, if you choose that, if you, if you want some changes to it, you have it right now and then at the next meeting you'll vote it.
So the next agenda item is your evaluation review. So we don't vote on that tonight either, or do we vote on all of this?
Yeah, you can vote on the evaluate, you can vote on the evaluation tonight.
Okay. So this is separate. We don't vote on it as part of your evaluation.
Yeah, in the past, what I've done is tried to take the superintendent goals and give the public and yourselves time to ask questions, to ask for more specifics, maybe like how am I going to do something? And, and then you vote it at the next meeting.
I personally don't have any questions at this point. I think you and I had, you know, I, I think I was probably the lucky school committee member who had the opportunity to talk to you in depth when I offered you your review and we really talked about some of your learning goals. So I think I have a better insight than others do. I think that this is representative of what we discussed in regards to moving forward, moving our district forward, always keeping our, our staff and students kind of as our priorities. So I don't know if anybody else has any questions or comments at this point? Seeing none. I think then what we do is we just put this aside until next week. Is that what you, or until our next meeting?
That's correct. It'll be up at your next meeting for a vote. So if the committee members or the public has any comments on it, this would be the opportunity to make comments on it and you can send them directly to me.
Perfect. So then we will move on, I guess. Seeing no comments currently from the public or from us, we will move to our next agenda item, which is your evaluation review. So I think I do that, is that?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Okay. So I don't think that I necessarily have to. I thought that we had already done this. Had we not discussed this in a school committee public forum?
Yeah, you have, you've gone, you've discussed it, you just haven't provided the overall rating for each of the category, categories. So the four different categories, just announcing what they are and then the overall rating, that has to be entered into the public record. So you don't have to go line by line.
Okay, so it's step one, step two, step three.
Right, so if you go to.
I'm not seeing step four.
Yeah, well, that's, it used to be there, but they, they haven't come up with it yet, to be quite honest. You go to the, sorry, if you go to page, it would be numbered, if you have the title page one of seven.
Yep.
And then you have below it at step two, you have standard one instructional leadership and it has a check next, or next, next to it.
Yep.
It says proficient. And then you do the same thing for two, three and four.
Oh, I have to actually read each line.
Just the, each of those lines, what they are as a, as a re, as a decision by the committee. And then on the next page, you just simply announce the overall summative rating of the superintendent as it's noted. And then anybody can add comments if they want. That's the process.
All right. Well, if it's okay, I will do that, but I, I would like to maybe just highlight a few things, a couple of points that I shared with you when we spoke, if that's okay. So maybe I will kind of do a little narrative first. And I don't think it will be a surprise by anybody who is listening to our school committee meeting or the public to know that I think we're really very fortunate. And I think I'm speaking on behalf of the entire school committee. This was a collaborative evaluation. It wasn't done by just one set of eyes. We all shared our own input and our own perspectives, but I think that we really had some commonalities. I think one of the things that we all agreed on is that you're an absolutely visible leader and we really appreciate that, that you're visible for, of course, for our students and staff, always available for us on the school committee. And I think one of the other things was that we really appreciate that you absolutely are receptive to positive feedback, but you're even more receptive to what we would consider constructive feedback, that when we come to you with questions, concerns, when families come to you, that you are willing to take in the information and really process it to come to a, what we would believe would be the most optimal outcome. I think one of the other things is that we absolutely all agree that I know that you have support and I know that Matt offers a lot of assistance. So Matt, I don't want to take this away from you, but we also think as a superintendent, we're pretty fortunate that you are able to manage what we would consider an underfunded budget, that working with Matt, of course, that with every financial challenge that comes to your way, that you just never are overly negative about it. You come up with a plan and it really doesn't, although we would like to, to do better and to be better in certain areas, I think we as a group have really prioritized the need for our district. And although we don't always have what we want or what we think is best, we always make sure that we support student learning. So, and I think one of the other things that we really appreciate is that you support every child. And in your review, I absolutely capitalized the word every, that it's every child, both academically and socially, and I think we really appreciate that. I think we clearly know as a group that Norton Public Schools certainly isn't perfect, but I think given our financial situation, given sort of the challenges of COVID and, you know, this year, we certainly had a lot of challenges even pre-COVID. If I remember correctly, there was a huge window project, there was an asbestos issue. I mean, the list goes on and on of the daily challenges that you are confronted with. So we really appreciate that in the midst of all of that, you really do highlight every single student receiving optimal support and education. So thank you. So step two, the assessed performance on standards. So standard one, instructional leadership, proficient. Standard two, management and operations exemplary. Standard three, family and community engagement exemplary. And standard four, professional culture exemplary. And as an overall rating, based on the performance, we gave you an exemplary rating. So Dr. Bayetta, we thank you for leading our district. I think we really have been very fortunate over the past few years. And I think that during COVID, we really saw you rise and really appreciated that. So I'm not sure if anybody else has comments, questions, anything to add?
I think we just, I, I think we all agree with, since, you know, this, this was done by all of us, that, you know, we are fortunate. We've, especially in this time with things that are happening, we are very fortunate to have not only Joe leading, but the, the people that he's put in place that make up his team. So I think just keep doing what you're doing, but don't leave with a big head after tonight.
Unfortunately, we don't have any extra money to give you. So I guess at this point, we can, do we open it for?
Yep.
Comment? Is there any public comment or questions? Seeing none, I see Jen shaking her head, so we are going to move to a vote. So we are only voting on this particular document, right? So is there a motion to approve the evaluation report of the superintendent for the academic year 2020? Right?
Yep.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, Dan?
Yes.
Sherry?
Yes.
Dinesh?
Yes.
And Carolyn, I'm a yes.
Madam Chair, thank you, thank you to the committee. You know, we, we, when you sit in the seat, you have a, the head's already big, as you can see, I have a melon head as our, as it is, and the ego's big, but it's always, it's always, you know, as one of the only employees in the Commonwealth that actually has their evaluation done publicly, where you can be criticized for anything or provided support. It's hard for me to accept pats on the back, if you will, or positives such as those that you noted, but I can't do it without the school committee recognizing what I always say publicly and Kathleen, I know is not here tonight, but she goes to the conference with me. You truly have provided me what I would call a CEO model of a superintendent, where you trust that I'm going to make good decisions and I communicate them to you on a constant daily basis with my emails that are constantly going out to you, the families that have been incredibly supportive and kind, and also provided the constructive criticism for us to get better. The staff, the working relationship that we try to have every day, that it's not just management and labor, that it is a team, that it is a family and families disagree and argue, but at the end of the day, we try to do good things. And then lastly, I'm really, probably no year as a superintendent have, have I been prouder of the administrators that I work with than this year? Not only because they were thrown a curve ball, but because they have given countless hours away from their loved ones to do good things for the Norton kids. And again, it's not perfect and they'll be the first ones to tell you, I just had a meeting this morning about some of that in an order, a way to find it, but they make me look good. I try to support them and we try to grow from our mistakes and do great things for kids and the staff. So I'm humbled and thank you very much.
Well, thank you for everything. I think that was it. So we are going to move on. Vinnie, we are going to turn the meeting over to you to discuss and vote on community service requirements for the high school students.
Thanks so much. So every year we do a credit check at the, as part of the guidance process for all of our seniors. And the good news is that most of our seniors are right on target and doing really well despite everything that happened in the, in the spring. But the one area of concern that we have is regarding community service hours. As you folks know, you know, the requirement is 50 hours, but our seniors lost all of the spring and all of the summer, which is a good part of the time when many of our students had to catch up on those hours if they, they haven't been able to do so, you know, prior to that. Currently, we have about 118 seniors who have 24 hours or less in terms of their hours that they've been able to, to accumulate so far. And then out of that, out of the whole senior group, we only have 35 students who actually have met the 50 hours at this point. I know over the summer I had a number of students reach out. We've reached out to some agencies and some local folks who usually help us out with some of this. And as you probably can guess, they were not accepting any kind of volunteers or if they were, it was very limited. We've worked, tried to work with some of our other providers, you know, in terms of our career, career specialist, she's tried to help us out. And the, just the, the hard facts are that there are not a lot of places where we can ask our students to go or that are accepting any kind of help at this time. So given those factors, I think we have to consider waiving the hours at this point because again, I have no way of knowing if we're actually, this is going to get better or worse, you know, over the winter and the fall. So I think our recommendation is to, to waive the hours at this point.
Vinnie, can I ask, has there been any conversations about any options to do something remotely or to kind of be creative? Has that kind of been something that has been looked into and, and not come to fruition? Can you talk a little bit about that?
I mean, I think just the numbers, there are some places that have done that, but to be honest, not very many, you know, that offer that kind of opportunity. And the numbers of students that we're talking about, so we have, we might be able to get a few students those opportunities, but when you're looking at the, the numbers that we have to meet, I think it's going to be very difficult to, to do that. I have concerns about saying you have to go to a certain location, if not remote, for community service, for the obvious reasons. So talking to, you know, the staff and the administration at the high school, we just have concerns about putting students in, in situations where we're not sure that we can guarantee their safety, not that you can guarantee it, but that, that we can ensure that and, but put pressure on them to go find ways of filling these community service hours.
And Pat, Carolyn, if I may, on the recommendation of the Health and Safety Committee via a conversation today, or yesterday into today, I also have postponed for the time being the internship program at the high school, where some of our students actually go into schools or work with a speech pathologist or work with a wellness teacher or work with a psychologist or work with a, all of that or a classroom, all of that currently has been postponed per the recommendation of the, the Health and Safety. So I would suggest to the committee to seriously, you know, we can always try to do something later. The problem with this is that this is something we, we don't want to do in community service hours, like, you know, for a month. We want it to be something that's like a longer time period of time so that they're learning from potentially multiple different areas, not just one. So as you know, if you might recall, we did this with the class of 2020 and the recommendation at this time would be to, to do the same thing for the class of 21.
I don't think I disagree. I think I feel like maybe I'm being really naive and I just hope that this is all going to go away in like a month or two and that, you know, we're going to vote tonight to perhaps discontinue the hours, but then come January that we're going to be back to normal. And I know that's not going to happen, but kind of my, my sort of wish is that by, you know, the, the new year, we're, we're going to have that opportunity. So I, I don't think that I'm necessarily opposed. I certainly supported it when it was brought to our attention in the spring for our 2020 graduates. So I definitely understand, Vinnie, the, the sort of challenge of it, right? I understand that we don't want our students to be put into unsafe situations just to get kind of their community service. So I'm not sure if anybody else has any thoughts on it or comments. I think when I saw it come kind of, I, I was thinking that I'm still probably living in, in some fantasy world where we're going to be all better in January, but it felt like this was really a little early to be talking about it. I know it's not when we look at reality, but does anybody else have comments or questions or thoughts about it? Sherry?
So I think that, you know, I, I agree, Vinnie. I think it's tough to ask kids to go out and find projects when there's really not much going on. I mean, certain things that I've been able to have, you know, students do, I'm, I'm not going to be able to, it's that they aren't running, it's tough. So I think that, and Carolyn, I agree, it is early, it's just the beginning of the, the school year, but you know, we just don't know what we're dealing with. And I think if we can take one, you know, one pressure off of these kids of that, well, maybe it'll happen, then we just take that pressure off. It's hard enough this year for these poor kids. But I would suggest that as a school department, that we do kind of remind our students and not just high school, just about random acts of kindness, you know, and, and maybe, you know, looking towards an elderly neighbor and raking their yard or shoveling a driveway or a walkway in the winter, just something that they can still give back to their community. they can still give back to their community. And it would be helpful to somebody who, who might be in need. That's just a suggestion I would have.
That's a good point. So Dinesh or Dan, any comments?
No. We discussed this already for the last year, so I'm ready to move on.
Okay. So why don't we take a vote? Is there a vote to, I guess, I'm sorry? A vote to, is there a motion? Sorry. Is there a motion to, what is the word?
Move the recommendation, move the recommendation to not require community service with.
Is there a vote to support the recommendation to not require community service hours for the current 2021 Norton High School seniors?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Sherry?
Yes.
Dan?
No.
Dinesh?
Yes.
And Carolyn, I'm a yes.
That's just three to one.
Great. Any other business, Dr. Bayetta?
Yeah, thank you. Just a quick announcement, two announcements. Number one, we have a number of minutes that we could put together. So I'm going to have Terry, Terry send those out to the entire committee and then probably just call for a meeting to settle the minutes, Madam Chair, if that's all right with you. And as we can get three, three people in the afternoon for a quick meeting. So everybody will get a copy. It'll be posted and all of that. And, and any changes can be done before the meeting for anybody who can't attend. And then we just take the roll call vote to get them posted into the record. And then the other thing is, I really want to thank the Northern Trust and the TPC. Although they didn't ask us for anything this year in terms of our communication, in terms of our collaboration, they just made a donation to Norton Public Schools for $15,000. So I know they had a successful tournament, but it didn't have the typical paying folks and everything else. So I'm sure they, they made money, but I'm sure they didn't make what they usually do. So we want to thank the Northern Trust and the TPC for that donation and their team of professionals that provided me with this information. It's, it's really cool that they still thought of Norton Public Schools and the relationship we've had in the past. We will make sure that all $15,000 are going as to direct to students in each of our schools. As you know, we distribute that amongst the five schools based on enrollment. We'll continue to do that so every school gets something. So thank you to them very much. That's it, Madam Chair.
That's great. Thank you. Any additional comments, questions? Nope, seeing none. Is there a motion to adjourn the school committee meeting?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Great. Dan?
Yes.
Sherry?
Yes.
Dinesh?
Yes.
And Carolyn is a yes. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you all.
Have a great night. Thank you.
Weekend. Take care.
Take care.